I must apologise that this meeting is late, the previous meeting overran, so my apologies. Before we commence the meeting, I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations, which are on the screen behind me. Also, please, can you ensure that your mobile phones are switched to silent? And councillors, can I please remind you to speak directly into the microphone and make sure your card is pushed firmly into the console? Members of the public, I would like to say that as a committee, we understand that the matters under consideration tonight can be emotive. However, please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and also respectful of the committee, refrain from any form of disturbance. And so now we move on to the main items of business. The minutes of the meeting which took place on the 7th of October 2015 have been laid on the table for the last 30 minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of that meeting?
Agreed.
Thank you. Have there been any apologies for absence, Fiona?
Thank you, Chairman. I've had apologies from councillors Dennis Lee, Stephen Reynolds and Simon Thornton.
Thank you. And have members declared any interests before the meeting?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I've had declarations from councillors David Els and Jenny Els, that's a pecuniary interest in items B1 and B2, as councillor David Els is agent for those applications.
And therefore we will leave the chamber before they're discussed, thank you. And so have there been any questions received from members of the public?
No, Chairman.
And Elizabeth, I believe there are some updates to government guidance or legislation, so you will make us aware.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, there is a key update for you since your last meeting. The government's published the Housing and Planning Bill, which you may be aware of, which will now work its way through Parliament. And the key measures for development control are firstly, that it is going to introduce a form of new permission in principle for small-scale housing developments on brownfield land, and it will apply on a site that is allocated for housing in a development plan or neighbourhood plan. And thereafter, only technical details consent will be needed to follow, a bit like reserve matters follows on an outline consent. To inform this, local planning authorities will have to keep a register of brownfield land, which is available for housing, and this will be land available and suitable for at least five dwellings with no clear constraints on development. Secondly, the new bill requires planning authorities to promote the supply of starter homes for first-time buyers and for residential development to contain a specified portion of starter homes. Starter homes are to become a part of the definition of affordable housing. Thirdly, there's going to be a requirement for planning authorities to make provision for serviced plots for self-build and custom-build in new residential developments. And finally, the poorly performing authorities' special measures regime is to be extended to include non-major development. So, members, we'll be aware at the moment that government monitors speed and appeals on major development, but this regime is going to be rolled out for non-major development. Separately, the government has announced that it will make the current permitted development rights for changes of use from office to residential permanent from 2016. You may be aware that that was going to cease next year, where we would go back to permission being required, but that's now going to become a permanent right. And in addition, similar rights are going to be introduced from light industry and lawn drets to housing. Lawn drets is a rather strange one, but that's what they're proposing. And these permitted development rights will all be subject to prior approval procedures as the existing ones are. So I hope that update's helpful to members. We will keep you up to date with the progress of the bill as it moves through Parliament, and I hope that's helpful. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And now we move on to item six, and can I ask Victoria to introduce the quarterly enforcement report, please?
Oh, thank you, Chairman. Members, there are no verbal updates with regard to the site-specific, sites for the central area. May I just take you to the top of page 10 with regards to the local performance indicator? And you'll note for the quarter, there has been a reduction in performance to 75%, although this still exceeds the target of 70%. The reason for this is that there has been a diversion of resources from enforcement to the area planning teams. This was a temporary measure and has now come to an end. Also, if I could draw your attention to page nine, the bottom of page, beg your pardon, point two on page nine, the summary of caseload. You will note that it is now 206, which has been a significant decrease. 206 is in fact the lowest cases on hand we have recorded. And thank you very much, members. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any comments from anybody? No? Yes, councillor Martin?
Sorry, can I just recap that? So Beth Helen Smith is on maternity leave, and we've got fewer members of the department, and we've had this remarkable performance. Do I summarise that correctly?
I think the response to that is, Chairman, that we've tried to continue to support the team as well as possible, and there's been a concerted effort, as there has been over the last few years, to clear some of these older backlog cases. And certainly, though I've managed the team overall, I think that the team have done really well to clear some of these older cases. And that has been the consequence, so personalities aside, I think that's been the outcome.
What I was going on to say, I mean, I think it's a terrific performance, but I was just saying you'd seem to have done a great deal more with less, and that's just fantastic. So, well done.
Councillor Martin?
Thank you. I echo the positive vibes there, but I just have a slight concern that, if I heard correctly, that we diverted resources from enforcement to planning. I'm assuming because of shortages in our planners and that this has come to an end, is that likely to happen again? And if so, are we likely to see any further decreases in performance that would take us below the threshold? We've done very well up until this quarter, and in fact even at the last time we were talking about this, I was muting increasing the target, and almost as a result of that, it seems as if we've got closer to the original one. But I just wanted to make sure that we're not going to, this isn't the start of a precedent to divert staff from the enforcement team regularly to planning, to cater for shortages there, and thus return to a sort of, to the sort of bad times when enforcement cases were on the up. I'm happy for this to be a blip, but I just want to make sure this isn't the start of something more worrying.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I think, I want to give members confidence that it was a short-term measure. We have to remain flexible in the way that we use our very talented multitasking staff. We're fortunate to have, all our enforcement team are also qualified planners, so at times where we do have gaps in the applications team, we have to make sure they're covered first and foremost, because they are the statutory targets, the ones that government are monitoring. It has implications for our powers as a planning authority if we don't meet those targets. So enforcement remains an extremely high priority. We know it's a high priority for members, but we do need to be flexible. But I think going forward, we're satisfied that that measure has achieved its purpose, and that the team are now back to dealing with enforcement cases. And we hope that the performance against the indicator will be much better next quarter. Thank you, Chairman.
And thank you, councillor Hunter.
I'd just like to note that on top of page six, the first item, cost cutter, their name has changed to another, I think it's called Premier now, I don't know if the ownership has changed.
Thank you. Do you want to come back? Oh, thank you very much. I'll note the file and I'll ensure the title's changed on that. Thank you, councillor. Thank you. Any other comments? So the committee, the committee has asked, it was recommended that the committee notes the performance on planning enforcement. And now we move on to item seven. And Catherine, will you introduce the quarterly appeals report for us, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Starting on page 13 of your agenda, you'll note there were three appeals for the central area received in the last quarter. There was a delegated refusal which was dismissed, a delegated refusal which was allowed, and a committee overturn which was allowed. The first appeal on page 13 relates to the old fire station in Godleming. The proposal was for a change of use from Class D1 to Class C3 and the creation of six flats. Whilst the inspector was satisfied that there was no interest in the reuse of the building for a community use, and that the change of use to residential would not harm the vitality and viability of the town centre, the inspector agreed with officers that the proposal would be out of keeping with its surroundings and would be over-dominant and intrusive. The appeal was therefore dismissed. The second appeal, over the page on page 14, was for a single-storey extension at One Null Quarry in Godleming. This was a delegated refusal. The inspector disagreed with the decision to refuse permission, noting that the house did not have a traditional form, and therefore the extension proposed need not follow a traditional form, as is recommended in the residential extensions SPD. The inspector concluded the extension would be well-designed, and the appeal was allowed. The third and final appeal, on page 15, related to the erection of two pairs of four-bedroom dwellings at 17A Oxted Green. This was a committee overturn decision. In allowing the appeal, the inspector noted that there would be sufficient separation distance between the appeal properties and neighbouring properties to prevent harmful overlooking, and that the gardens to serve the dwellings would be suitably sized. The inspector also concluded that owing to their setback, the proposals would not be readily visible and would not undermine the character and appearance of the area. The inspector also considered the width of the access road, which he considered to be acceptable, and he was satisfied that the proposed development would not generate significant new traffic movements, and the appeal therefore succeeded and was allowed. That concludes the quarter's appeal report, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Catherine. Councillor Wheatley?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just wondered, with these, where the appeals were allowed, did the council get served any fines or costs?
There were no awards or costs made for any of those appeals.
Councillor James?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. On the Oxted Green one, as we gave permission for another similar design at our last meeting, do they have the option of building either?
Yes, they have two permissions, yeah.
No more questions? So once again, it is recommended that the committee notes the recent appeals decisions. And we now move on to item eight, applications for planning permission. So in the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday, the 30th of November 2015, at a time to be agreed. Moving on to the planning application, item A1, WA 2015 1391. Now, this is item, as I've just said, A1, Binscombe Church, Lowesley Road, Farncombe, GU7, 3RF. Gemma, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
Thank you very much, Chairman. The site lies at the junction of Lowesley Road and Barnes Road, with a predominantly residential area. The site comprises a detached part-two-storey, part-single-story building of a simple design utilised as an independent evangelical church. The site has the benefit of two access points, one from Lowesley Road and one from Barnes Road. The frontage of the site provides five vehicle parking spaces, with a further nine-vehicle parking spaces located to the side of the church. To the west of the building, within the site, is 10 Lowesley Road, which is the house occupied by the pastor associated with the church. Here's an aerial photograph of the site, the church is here, these are the two entrance roads and the parking areas. Again, with the existing site layout plan giving you a little bit more detail here, two access points, parking to the front and side, and the pastor's house. The proposal involves the demolition of the existing church and the erection of a new church building. The new building would provide an additional 800, sorry, beg your pardon, 289 square metres of floor area above that of the existing building. Although it should be noticed that only 84 square metres of this additional floor area would be dedicated for activities associated with the church. The remaining additional floor area would be used for ancillary purposes, such as providing more accessible toilet facilities, upgraded kitchen facilities and better storage. So there's a proposed floor plan there. The current building provides a large hall, a small hall, I'll go back to it there for you, sorry, a large hall, a small hall, and four meeting rooms, an office and toilet facilities. The proposed new building would be two-story, part-single, sorry, be part-two-story, part single-story, with a partially winged, partially flat-hipped roof, measuring 1.6 metres in width, 4.47 metres in depth and 6.4 metres in overall height. The proposal also involves the closure of the access from Lowesley Road, that's its access here, and the reconfiguration of the existing parking, taking it from the front to the side, 14 spaces down the side, and three additional spaces within the front curtilage of number 10 to serve the proposed church. Some elevations of the church, just to give you an idea of the overall design in comparison to the existing building. Just moving on to some slides now, this is the access currently existing from Lowesley Road that will be subject to the closure. This is the south-east front elevation of the building. And this is the access from Barnes Road. This is the north-east elevation of the site, seen from Barnes Road. And here is the existing church and its juxtaposition with number 42 Barn Road. This is looking to four, number 24 Barnes Road. And that's their rear curtilage there, apologies, I realise I spelt Barnes Road wrong. And this is from the rear of the site, looking towards number 22 Oakmead. This is the north-west elevation of the site, with number 10 here. And this is the view of the site currently from Lowesley Road. Looking to the left of the slide, the matters of principle and technical opinion are: the principle of the development, having regard to the location of the site within the developed area; the redevelopment of the existing community facility in the settlement area, noting that the proposal is required to satisfactorily accommodate its existing needs and activities, as well as providing for potential future aspirations; and highway safety, noting that the local highway authority have raised no objection to the proposal on such grounds. Moving to the left, sorry, the right of the slide, members are being asked to exercise their judgement on impact on visual amenity, noting the overall scale of the building and the space retained around the site; impact on residential amenity, having regard to the existing established use and unfettered activities currently carried out on the site; and the parking spaces provision, noting that onsite parking is provided and in conjunction with a travel plan is considered to be acceptable in principle to meet the needs of the development. If members like to turn to the update, members will see that after further consideration, and in light of the views of the third party, whilst the draft details submitted in the travel plan accompanying this planning application are considered to be acceptable in principle, in its current form, the travel plan provides inadequate and enforceable details, and the recommended condition 11, as shown on the update, requires the submission of a more detailed travel plan. As such, the revised recommendation is that permission is granted, subject to conditions 1 to 10 on pages 38 to 41 of the agenda, condition 11 as shown above in the update, and informatives 1 to 4 on pages 41 to 42 of the agenda. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Gemma. And now this item is subject to speaking, and I understand the procedure has been explained. So we only have one speaker. May I introduce the supporter, Douglas Hammond, to speak? Thank you. You have four minutes from the time you start speaking.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Doug Hammond, I'm a member of Binscombe Church and part of the leadership team there, and I'm also a trustee of the church. Binscombe Church is a mainstream Christian evangelical church affiliated to a network of over 500 churches across the UK. Binscombe Church began over 50 years ago, when a number of local residents came together to build a church that would both serve their needs and the local community. Since those early days, successive generations have built on that vision. Today, we continue to run a variety of activities throughout the week that are supported by local people and are very popular. In recent years, we have identified the need for a new building, because we consider that the present building is limiting our purpose. We're often at capacity, the toilets are inadequate, circulation is difficult, and access for disabled people is in some areas impossible. We have highlighted these reasons and other factors in detail in our application to rebuild. We propose a larger new building, which will include additional room space, better circulation, improved facilities and increased storage. We are aware of a few objections to our application, mainly relating to the assumed traffic and parking congestion on Sunday mornings. The highway authority have reviewed our application, and after consideration, did not raise any concerns. However, we take seriously the concerns raised, and as a partner in the local community, our desire is to mitigate problems for local residents. In this respect, we have developed a travel plan that has been submitted with our planning application, which we are currently implementing. Furthermore, we continue to monitor traffic and parking to minimise the impact on our neighbours. Any potential new activities and events would be programmed to complement our current programme, ensuring that our site is not being overrun at any time during the week and in a way that is appropriate to car capacity and with the consideration for our neighbours. With regard to objections relating to excessive traffic when the church is used as a polling station, this seemed a particular concern. Clearly, this was not a church activity over which we had control. But nonetheless, we would like to serve our wider community in similar ways in the future. Concern was also expressed about potential disruption to bus services. We would also note that bus services do not run on Sundays. Nonetheless, having monitored the situation during the week, we are unaware of any disruption to bus services caused by church-related activities. We've been careful to take extensive professional advice and have consulted widely with the community. We would ask that our application for a new church building be given favourable consideration, a building which we believe will enhance the visual appearance of the local area and which will better serve our congregation and the local community for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Hammond. And so now, there's no other speakers. So, members, may we have your comments, observations and questions? Thank you, councillor Wheatley.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I am one of the members in which the church lies, in Binscombe, Godleming. I think the church is to be congratulated that its congregation is growing to such an extent that it actually requires a larger building. I think that's fantastic, many churches would love to be in that situation. That end of town is very short of community buildings. I am already trying to encourage one further down the road towards Northbourne. It's sadly lacking any sort of community facilities round there, so this would be a tremendous asset. Personally, I find the design very pleasing. It sort of echoes the vernacular of our leisure buildings with our little wavy bits, so although it isn't a waverly building, it looks as though it would blend very beautifully. And I personally would like to think that if this is allowed, that the application is likely to become a very valuable community asset. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other? Oh, councillor Hunter?
I'm also a councillor for Binscombe Ward, and I fully support this application. I think it'll be an asset to Binscombe, and it'll be widely used. Thanks, Madam Chairman.
Councillor Martin?
Thank you. Yes, I can understand some of the objections in terms of the scale and the size, but on the other hand, when you look at the proposed elevations, the height, the height of the new proposed church does not exceed the height of houses close by, and therefore care has been taken to make that so. I mean, it is a substantial building in the middle of our residential community, and I guess it's not really ideal. However, it is there already, and this is to make it better with better facilities and a more usable building, both for the church and I'm sure for a public perhaps use as well, if they rent out the facilities. I think the arguments as regards the polling station are quite right, if it's a polling station, it's a polling station, and that's not, I think, to be something which we would take account of in an application of this sort. It's sad that there aren't more parking spaces, I'm sure that the church would love to have more parking spaces, and I'm sure that residents close by would like that to be the case, but it's not greatly different to the position that we have today. So I don't think it's, if this were a blank, starting all over again, I'm not quite sure I would be quite so much in support, but it's not, it's an improvement to a building which is there already, and my judgement is that it looks okay, and therefore I'd be happy to support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Any last questions? Before we move on to the recommendation, which is that, subject to conditions 1 to 10 and informatives 1 to 4 as set out in the report, plus additional condition 11 as set out on the update sheet, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant? All in favour? So, thank you, members, the recommendation to grant is agreed. And now, members, due to the interest that I disclosed at the beginning of the meeting, I'll hand over to Vice-Chairman councillor Ellis to take over as chairman for the non-speaking items.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Shall we move on? If I just find the page. Item B1, WA 2015 stroke 1821, the construction of two dormer windows and alterations at Punchbowl Farm, Highfield Lane, Thursday. Gemma?
Thank you very much, Chairman. The site is located to the south of Highfield Lane and is accessed from the main highway by way of a private drive. There are several outbuildings located within the site, sorry, beg your pardon, there are several outbuildings located within the curtilage of the site, and equestrian building located to the south-east of the site. The proposal is for the installation of one hip-roof dormer window in the east roof slope and one hip-dormer window in the west roof slope of the host dwelling. The proposed dormer windows would be of a scale and design that would match a dormer window currently existing on the host dwelling, and would be constructed from matching materials. Showing the floor plans, this is the existing floor plan at second floor, which is currently a study, and the proposed second floor plan showing the two new dormer windows. This is the east elevation of the building, the dormer window will be going just here.
The dormer window will be going just here, on the east, and to the west on this elevation. This is the example of the existing dormer window on the south elevation, which the proposal would repeat. Looking to the left of the slide, the matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of the development, having regard to the location of the site within the green belt and the exceptions of paragraph 89 of the MPPF, and the highways on provision of parking spaces, noting that the local highway authority have raised no objection to the proposal on such grounds. Looking to the right of the slide, members are being asked to exercise their judgement on impact on openness and amenity of the green belt, having regard to the very marginal increase in floor area resulting from the proposed dormer windows and their overall modest scale and design; the impact on landscape character, noting that as a result of their modest domestic scale, the proposed dormer windows would not be highly visible features within the surrounding landscape; and impact on residential amenity, noting that as a result of the proposition of the dormer windows, they would not cause any material issues of loss of light, overshadowing, overlooking or overbearing impacts upon neighbouring properties. Since the publication of the update, officers have been made aware of an objection received from a third party relating to the proposed dormer on the east of the property, sorry, east-facing dormer window. The third party states that the proposed east dormer window is positioned in a location which would provide direct line of sight into three bedrooms within the property, as well as a large proportion of the garden. As such, the third party feels the addition of the window would result in a substantial loss of privacy. If I could just show members this, submit this block plan. Officers had already assessed the impact of the development, but just for further clarification, in assessing the impact of the proposed dormer windows on neighbouring amenity, officers had regard to the council's Residential Extensions SPD, which recommends a minimum distance of 18 metres between the shared boundaries and 21 metres window-to-window distance. As demonstrated on this drawing, the proposal would meet these guidelines and as such, officers are still confident that the proposal would not cause material harm to the third party in terms of overlooking or loss of privacy to warrant a reason for refusal of this application. In light of the above, the recommendation remains that permission be granted, subject to conditions one to three, set out on pages fifty-eight and fifty-nine of the agenda. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Gemma. Members?
I have absolutely no problem and I suggest that we all support the application. Thank you.
Why don't we hurry along then to page fifty-eight where we'll find the recommendation? And that is that permission be granted, subject to a number of conditions and one informative. Can I see those in favour of the recommendation?
That's agreed, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Moving quickly on, item B2, DEP 2015 stroke 1822, listed building consent for the construction of two dormer windows and external alterations at Punchbowl Farm, Highfield Lane, Thursday.
Point of order, Chairman. I wonder if perhaps we could, in light of the previous vote, could we just go straight to a vote? I'd be happy to do that if other members are happy to do so.
I wouldn't like to cut Gemma off if she has something to say, Mr Martin. On the other hand, she may not have anything.
Chairman, just for the record, if members are happy that they have read the report and are cognisant with the listed building tests that you need to take into account, then I think it would be appropriate to go to the recommendation.